All right, I'd like to call this meeting of your Newark City Council order. Would you please call?
Mrs. Floyd.
Here.
Mr. Guthrie.
Here.
Ms. Hall.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Marmee.
Here.
Mr. Ratt.
Here.
Mr. Roletta.
Here.
Mr. Blake.
Present.
Mr. Bub.
Here.
And Mr. Koss.
Here.
All right, we have everyone here this evening. Please rise to the communication by Mrs. Floyd, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Would you bow your heads, please? Almighty God, we thank you for the warmer weather, and even though the rain is frustrating sometimes, we know it's going to bring rain to this area, and after the long winter we need that. We ask you to be with our safety force as they're out, sometimes with bad weather in the springtime. We ask you to be with us as we make our deliberations tonight, that we work together for the betterment of the citizens of Newark. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. Next on the agenda this evening, we have caucus time for council to discuss anything that may concern them about the agenda this evening. Do we have anything? Mr. Guthrie.
Mr. President, because council rules require that anticipated extension, we announce it under caucus.
Yes.
I'm going to announce that I'm going to abstain from Resolution 14-19. I happen to own a small house in St. Louisville, and I fear that it might present a conflict in the policy of the legacy of the boroughs.
Anyone else for caucus? Next, we have the minutes of the March 17th, 2014 meeting. Do we have a motion to approve this? Motion. Question by Mr. Ratt.
Sure.
Seconded by Mr. Koss. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
At the same time, that passes. We have one appointed this evening. Mayor Hall is reappointing Robert Klingon Smith to the Newark Keith Licken County Port Authority Board of Directors. His four-year term begins June 1st, 2014, and will expire May 31st, 2018. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
At the same time, that passes. Thank you. We have five reports of standing committees this evening, without finance, safety, service, economic development, and ways and means, without objection, those will be received and filed. We have three reports from city officials tonight, one from auditor Stephen Johnson, one from Barb Joes, and one from Licken County Municipal Judges, also without objection, those will be received and filed. This evening, we have five communications. They're listed there. Eric Chad and Chrissy Hale, Rhonda Loomis, PG Suttonfield, Paul Moran, and Roger Loomis, also without objection, those will be received and filed. And Mayor Hall has a proclamation this evening. Mayor.
I'll kind of start out real quick. It's based on child abuse. This is Child Abuse Prevention Month. Child abuse is a pervasive and deadly problem. In 2011, over 676,000 children were determined to be victims of abuse or neglect. As in prior years neglect was the most common form of child maltreatment, the victims also suffered from physical abuse, sexual abuse, and psychological maltreatment. An estimated 1,570 children died in 2011. In 1983, Congress declared April will be National Child Abuse Prevention Month. Since that time, communities across the country have taken the opportunity to raise awareness of issues surrounding child maltreatment and abuse through proclamations, ceremonies, educational forums, tributes, and candlelight vigils. April's a time to look back, to acknowledge that children have suffered and the losses sustained through our communities because of that suffering. But it's also a time to look forward. Most of all, time when children no longer have to live in fear. On Saturday was the Second Annual Million March Against Child Abuse that was held across the United States. We're very fortunate to have one here in Newark. There are not just a few handful across the state of Ohio. And I asked Renee Steele to join me up here. She was the organizer of that march, and it was held behind the Y. It was kind of a little bit of a frigid morning, but the march went off at 1:00 nice, and I did a proclamation of that. I'd like to go ahead and present it to her at this time. Whereas National Child Abuse Prevention Month began in 1983 as a part of the presidential proclamation to raise awareness of the alarming rate at which children were being abused and neglected. And whereas in April 5th, 2014, Americans across the nation, more than 100 cities in 40 states, will walk in what is known as the Million March Against Child Abuse. And whereas this annual event is to raise awareness, education, prevention, and tougher sentencing for child abuse and crimes against children in the U.S. and our communities. And whereas statistics on crimes against children each year in the U.S. are staggering, sobering, and compel all of us to want to get involved in this effort. And whereas parents, families, and communities can help reduce child abuse and neglect by recognizing that prevention starts with each of us. And whereas this year Newark will hold its Second Annual Million March Against Child Abuse at the Licken County Family YMCA beginning at 10:00 a.m., now therefore, I, Jeff Hall Bear, of the great city of Newark, hereby proclaim the month of April 2014 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Newark, Ohio, and urge all citizens to get involved in the effort to prevent child abuse and neglect. And I want to thank Renee for her efforts in this community to keep this on the forefront and the top burner. So, and how are you, honey? Good to see you. Okay, good. I liked you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Renee.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda this evening, we have your first opportunity for comments from citizens. There's also another opportunity after the legislation. Do we have anyone for this first opportunity of comments from citizens? Okay, next we will go on to ordinance 14-03. Ordinance is on the second reading.
Ordinance 14-03 by Mr. Koss, Mr. Marmee, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Ratt, Ms. Hall. An ordinance annexing certain territory generally described as being .275 acres, more or less, Lot 26 in Van Tassel, Mount Vernon Road allotment, located in North Township to the city of Newark, Ohio.
You've heard the second reading of 14-03. What is your wish?
Turn.
Mr. Koss, motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Koss.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Marmee. Do we have any discussion on 14-03? Mr. Marmee.
Yeah, this is a lot that is currently, it's a house, but actually, for those of you that are aware of a local business up in the area, Beliza, they are looking to expand their business up in that area. And I think that this business is one of those incubator businesses that started out as something small, and it's starting to employ more and more individuals, and it's something that's fantastic for our community. And not only are they drawing income from residents of Newark, all throughout Licken County, but also other counties surrounding Licken County and bringing those dollars into our community. And I think it's something that everybody should just recognize as one of those small businesses that started out small, but is really blossoming into something good for our community.
Thank you, Mr. Marmee. Anyone else? All of us, please call a roll of vote.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Ratt.
Yes.
Mr. Roletta.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
And Mr. Koss.
Yes.
14-03 has passed. Next, we have ordinances on the first reading, 14-06.
Ordinance 14-06 by Mr. Marmee, Mr. Ratt. An ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property generally described as 363 North 21st Street, city of Newark, Licken County, Ohio, from that of single-family residence RL Low Density District to LO Limited Office District.
14-06 will be referred to the planning commission. Next, we have 14-07.
Ordinance 14-07 by Mr. Koss, Mr. Marmee, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Ratt, Ms. Hall. An ordinance authorizing and directing the Newark City Safety Director to certify to the Licken County Auditor the sum of $48,768.56 incurred by the Newark City Property Maintenance Department with respect to property maintenance violations to be placed as a lien upon certain parcels of real property situated in the city of Newark, Ohio.
14-07 will be held for a second reading. Next, we have 14-08.
Ordinance 14-08 by Mr. Blake, Mr. Marmee, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Ratt, and Ms. Hall. To provide for the issuance of $370,000 of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying the cost of improvements to the city's landfill and all necessary appurtenances there are due, and declaring an emergency.
14-08 is an emergency. What is your wish?
Mr. President, I wish to waive the two-day review.
Review rule? You don't have to waive it with emergency, Mr. Blake.
Oh, I'm sorry. To adopt. I'm sorry.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Blake, seconded by Mrs. Floyd. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all of us, please call a roll of vote.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Ratt.
Yes.
Mr. Roletta.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
And Mr. Koss.
Yes.
14-08 has passed. Next resolution's on the second reading, 14-17.
Resolution 14-17 by Mr. Blake, Mr. Koss, Mr. Marmee, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Ratt, Ms. Hall. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Newark to apply for funding from the United States Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance under the Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant Program.
You've heard the second reading of 14-17. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Blake.
Move to adopt Resolution 14-17.
Motion by Mr. Blake, seconded by Mr. Koss. Do we have any discussion on 14-17? Seeing none, all of us, please call a roll of vote.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie.
I'm staying.
I thought it was 14-19, Mr. Guthrie.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Ratt.
Yes.
Mr. Roletta.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Koss.
Yes.
14-17 has passed. Next, we have 14-19.
Resolution 14-19 by Mr. Koss, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Ratt, Ms. Hall. A resolution authorizing and directing the Director of Public Service of the city of Newark, Ohio, to negotiate and enter into contract to provide sanitary sewer service to the village of St. Louisville within the North Fork Segments Sewer District.
You've heard the second reading of 14-19. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Koss.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Koss.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Marmee. Is there any discussion on 14-19? Seeing none, all of us, please call a roll of vote.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Ratt.
Yes.
Mr. Roletta.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Koss.
Yes.
And 14-19 has passed, nine yes, one abstain. Next, we have 14-21.
Resolution 14-21 by Mr. Koss, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Ratt, Ms. Hall. A resolution authorizing and directing the Director of Public Service to accept bids and sell certain surplus personal property now owned by the city of Newark, Ohio, and declaring that such property is no longer needed for any municipal purpose.
You've heard the second reading of 14-21. What is your wish? Mr. President, Mr. Koss.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Koss.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Floyd. Do we have any discussion on 14-21? Seeing none, all of us, please call a roll of vote.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Ratt.
Yes.
Mr. Roletta.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
And Mr. Koss.
Yes.
14-21 has passed. Next, we have 14-22.
Resolution 14-22 by Mr. Blake, Mr. Koss, Mr. Marmee, Mrs. Floyd, and Mr. Ratt. A resolution appropriating monies for current expenses of municipal corporation.
You've heard the second reading of 14-22. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Blake.
Move to adopt 14-22.
Motion by Mr. Blake.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Koss. Any discussion on 14-22? Seeing none, all of us, please call a roll of vote.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Ratt.
Yes.
Mr. Roletta.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
And Mr. Koss.
Yes.
14-22 has passed. Next on the agenda, we have resolutions on the first reading, 14-23.
Resolution 14-23 by Mr. Blake, Mr. Koss, Mr. Marmee, Mrs. Floyd. A resolution appropriating monies for current expenses of municipal corporation.
14-23 will be held for a second reading in two weeks. Next, we have 14-24.
Resolution 14-24 by Mr. Blake, Mr. Koss, Mr. Marmee, Mrs. Floyd, and Mr. Ratt. A resolution appropriating monies for current expenses of municipal corporation.
14-24.
Mr. President, Blake. Move to waive the second day, two-day review rule.
Mr. Blake asked to waive the two-day review rule. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Floyd. Mr. Blake.
I understand there's some deadlines with the engineering consultant, and also wanting to pay off some fees to an employee.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. All of us, please call a roll to waive the two-day review rule.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Ratt.
Yes.
Mr. Roletta.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
And Mr. Koss.
Yes.
Two-day review rule has been waived. What is your wish?
Move to adopt 14-24.
Motion by Mr. Blake to adopt, seconded by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on 14-24? All of us, please call a roll of vote.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Ratt.
Yes.
Mr. Roletta.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Koss.
Yes.
14-24 has passed. Next, we have 14-25.
Resolution 14-25 by Mr. Ratt, Mr. Koss, Mr. Marmee, Mrs. Floyd, Ms. Hall. A resolution to allow for the transfer of ownership of certain real property to the Board of County Commissioners of Licken County, Ohio.
14-25 will be held for a second reading in two weeks. We have 14-26.
Resolution 14-26 by Mr. Koss, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Ratt, Ms. Hall. A resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Newark to enter into a Community Development Block Grant-funded subrecipient agreement with the hereand-after named organizations to carry out activities included within Newark's fiscal year 2014 Community Development Block Grant One-Year Action Plan.
14-26 will be held for a second reading in two weeks. Next, we have 14-27.
Resolution 14-27 is a resolution for bridge inspection program services including but not limited to bridge load rating calculations, scour assessments, bridge inspections, and fracture critical plan development, and this one is an emergency.
14-27, you've heard the reading of that. It is an emergency. What is your wish?
Mr. President, Mr. Koss.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Koss.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Marmee. Is there any discussion on 14-27? All of us, please call a roll of vote.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Ratt.
Yes.
Mr. Roletta.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Koss.
Yes.
14-27 has passed. Finally, this evening, 14-28.
Resolution 14-28 by Mr. Koss, Mrs. Floyd, Mrs. Floyd, sorry. Mr. Marmee, Mr. Ratt, and Ms. Hall. This is a resolution of demolition of structures located in the city of Newark. This work will be performed as part of PID 97587, license CR128/CR539-00.83/07346.
Thank you. 14-28 will be held for a second reading. And that concludes our legislation this evening. Thank you. Next, we have our second opportunity of citizens' comments. Do we have anyone? Mr. Moran.
Thank you, sir. Paul G. Moran, 63 North Fourth Street, New York. I attended a Renew Newark thing the other night, and I understand there's at least 80 people there. There's a lot of interest in this new movement that's going on around downtown, which is a good thing. But there's also some bad things around too. There's a concrete block building behind Little Bear. It's kind of boarded up somewhat, but you still see inside. I noticed that the floor has collapsed in on it, into the basement. And hopefully, this building can be brought down or compensate to any homeless person, derailed drunk, or anybody. If the city will look into getting this building down as soon as possible. Also, the Front Street Overpass, there's on the east side, the sidewalk, it's all broken up and covered in mud. It's really not usable at all because of the condition it is in. And it'd be nice if something, if a concrete or something, laid over the dirt that comes running down, or some gravel put in, or something. But it's in horrible condition, the sidewalk. Also, I've been sharing ideals with the city, which I enjoy very much doing. I talked with Alden and Jennifer the other day, all the ideals I've shared. And I'm hoping other people will come forward from the city and share stuff with all you folks, get more ideals and input, to make things better and improve on things from downtown to neighborhoods. And I just wish people would mail you, write you, come in and talk to you like I do, let us share council meeting or up in the mayor's office. I encourage people to come in and share their ideals. Not just keep to themselves or just say negative stuff all the time, but share something positive. And that's why I do what I do. I'm sure in your mailbox, you've seen stuff from me, you know. I enjoy doing, I feel good to do it, and it's all positive. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Moran. Do we have anyone else?
Lisa Best, 205 West Church, Newark. And this is in reference to Resolution 14-25. And it just reminds me, not with a bang, but a whimper. And only in Newark politics could such a dismal failure be deemed even remotely a success. This is another one of those times when I can say, told you so. The Wilson Street property that Judith Carr first brought up was questioned by me. It was during that golden age of accessibility, when citizens were not inhibited or bullied in the denial of their rights to an open public channel to the people's government. Those were the good old days, when the Republicans had control of council. And I never thought I would say that. Anyway, Wilson Street was brought up to council on at least three different occasions by three different officials. Carr, Dan Kaufman, his service director, and Kim Burton, development director. The premise was that this property was going to be the new headquarters and storage facility for the illustrious and predictably inevitably doomed city transit department. The only questions regarding the wisdom and process of buying this property came from the gallery, not council. The people who are supposed to be watching out for us failed miserably. This purchase only benefited the two or three people who made money on the deal. The rest of us, well, we got royal and truly, yeah. Perhaps we should just dissolve the city and hand everything over to the county to run, as this seems to be the trend and truly capabilities are in doubt. Decisions reached by ignorance, cowardice, corruption, or simply not at all. You can't even commit to a leash law. Now, as to the fascinating turn that committee chairs have taken in the denial of a free and unencumbered dialogue between the people and his government. Committee meetings are as close to a town meeting we get. Members of this community have the right to publicly question their representatives and the administration. Public answers, not lobby answers without witnesses or accountability. Imposing undue limitations and restrictions are based upon fear, because there is no valid excuse for limiting pertinent questions or this new and very stupid tactic of some committee chairs translating questions in some sort of ridiculous mediator position between the public and the administration. I, you know, I ask myself why this has only happened after the last election, when the party of the downtrodden and the common man has taken over. How embarrassing for you. Mr. Marmee, as former head of Finance Committee, and I have had some rather heated exchanges. But there was never an attempt to permanently stymie dialogue. Control and order, when it comes to citizens, are common enough concepts in the works of Machiavelli, or maybe Mein Kampf. Not very democratic, though. I suggest, instead of grasping for control over the people out here, simply asking the questions you don't, or saying things you don't like, try exerting a little control over the officials in here, for reasons other than getting reelected or ingratiating yourselves to an exclusive and privileged population of property or public employ. I suggest you be secure enough in your position to not be so scared of words, and listen to what's said here in public, rather than what's whispered in your ear. So ask yourselves, why smooth pavement trumps safe housing? Why Don Eager and other unproductive souls are still supported? Why we've had so many different and expensive studies on the square based on the same selected data and anecdotes? data and anecdotes? Why a simple rule like leashing a dog is so difficult, but subjective, unenforceable dog school laws slide on through? Or the continual justification in underutilizing the property maintenance code? Now, is this based on ignorance, cowardice, or corruption? And what better way to protect those motivations than by inhibiting questions in an open and public forum? How proud you must be.
Thank you, Ms. Best. That's what's so great about this country. Everybody's allowed to have an opinion, no matter how right or wrong it could possibly be. Is there anyone else?
Renee Steele, thirteen seventy Residence Drive, Newark, Ohio. I was invited by Mr. Hall this evening to give this proclamation, but I just would like to say that the past two years, Million March Against Child Abuse has taken place in Newark in different locations, and I could be no more prouder to be from Newark, Ohio, and to get the support that I have gotten from city officials, businesses in regards to their donations, and other communities in Lakeview County. This will be a continuance event here in Newark, and I hope that I get further cooperation from the city and elected officials and citizens. I just would like to say thank you very much for all the children.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, my name's Ron Palmer. I'm a co-founder of NetworkForRentals.com. We are an online software program that was designed to help the landlord/tenant community. And I just wanted to come tonight to kind of make the announcement...
Could you give us your address?
I'm sorry?
Could you give us your address?
Yeah, address? We've got a satellite office, which is one thirty-eight Union Street. Our main corporate is in Utica, actually, it's thirty-seven North Main Street. That's... The announcement I wanted to make, we are a local company. We currently have, you know, viewership from about forty-five different states. We are growing very quickly, and I'm wanting to work with city council. Our premise is, basically, with the landlord/tenant rental market, it's funded by local businesses, so landlords don't pay for anything, tenants don't pay for anything. In order to open a line of communication between the two, I feel that this can help a lot in the issues, and I know that city council here has had some of those in the past, as far as dealing with landlords and tenants and them being accountable for what their rights and laws and everything else are. So at this point, I just wanted to make the announcement that we are a local company. I wanted to work with city council, so that when you guys have these issues, I feel that our system can not fix, but definitely help in all those scenarios. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Ms. Rand. What was the name of the company?
It's NetworkForRentals.com, and it's the number four. I have information here if anybody would like to hear it.
Number four.
Yeah, it's NetworkForRentals.com. I'd like to send a head card to anybody that might want to hear it.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else this evening? Okay. Anyone from administration this evening? Honorable Mr. Johnson?
I'll pass, sir.
Honorable Law Director?
Thank you, Mr. President, I'll pass.
Mayor Hall?
I will pass.
Mrs. Floyd?
I will not pass.
Mr. Guthrie?
That's right. Several things. The church I belong to, First Presbyterian, which is a church on North Third Street, just beside the Elks, is going to start to have a series of community meetings. We did this the last two years, I think. And on May fourteenth, the mayor will be there. It's been sort of a community forum. You come in, you get a free lunch, you hear a short presentation, you have a chance to ask questions. It's over by one, so anybody who can come. Judge Brandstuhl's going to come to one meeting, and he sent somebody from Ellen Beach, I think. So I'll let you know when I get those dates down, so you can have it. I went to the meeting Thursday night, the whole plan for downtown Newark, the whole Renewark thing. I find it very exciting. I've been involved in politics and in stuff that's going on around Newark for many, many years. And there have been a number of proposals. I remember many years ago, meeting with Johnny John and some other people at the jewelry store down the street, the Sullivan Building, and going walking around downtown and seeing what we could do. And I think there is the most excitement there has ever been. And I realize neighborhoods have issues, and we've got things that have to be done in the neighborhood. We also need a vital downtown. And I know there will be some discussion about, you know, what's being proposed, and I'm sure there'll be some debate about it, but I think it's very exciting. I've belonged to the Downtown Newark Association for probably six years or so. They meet once a month. And when I first started going, one of the meetings we had was a Christie's Pizza with maybe two tables full of people. I was there last Tuesday morning in room A in the basement of the county building, and there were probably thirty-some people there, representing a number of different businesses and other interests. And there's a vitality that I have not seen in a very long time, and a feeling that this time, something really will happen, which I find a very good thing. And finally, I want to sort of answer a couple of things that were brought up about committee meetings. First of all, at committee meetings, we... it is not an open question and answer. It is basically to discuss proposed legislation. It's not like here, where at Citizens' Comments, somebody can come up and ask a question, which can't be answered during the meeting, but can at least be brought up and could be answered afterwards. But it's... any questions that can come up should be about specific legislation. And I know there's some frustration about the fact that people need to come to the microphone and need to speak into the microphone for each kind of thing they have, and not have a back and forth. But that's, as I see it, for two reasons. Number one, Autumn, our clerk, who takes wonderful minutes and does a great job, she needs to hear exactly what's being said, because her minutes are very complete. And if she can't hear them, she can't write them down. And secondly, thanks to the computer group, we are being broadcast, and this is now on YouTube. You can go to YouTube, and you can actually watch city council on YouTube. It's not on TV like it used to be, but it... but you need to be in a microphone so that people can actually see this. And I see that as a good thing. I still wish we were on TV, because I think a lot of older people in the community who used to like to watch it on TV probably don't go to the computer and go to YouTube. But I just... I just want to clarify that, because I think we're trying to make sure that our minutes are complete and that the community has a right to see what actually happens in council meetings, committee meetings, as well as regular council meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. Mr. Guthrie?
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple points. First, I want to thank Steve Johnson. Steve is always responsive when I make requests for information. I want to thank him for always being jelly-on-the-spot, Mr. Oliver. I also want to thank Mr. Moran and Ms. Moran, let you know that we do value your input, and I'm very grateful for the comments that you make and the information that you provide me in a very constructive way. I, um... I agree with pretty much everything that Mrs. Floyd said regarding committees. Very, a little bit, because I do think committees is the time for dialogue. And one thing that I really... I watched this in the last couple sets of committees that I think we should look very seriously at, and that is creating a second podium, so that it is more conducive for some level of dialogue, whether if we have someone making a presentation at that podium, and a member of council who is in the audience has a question, it's just cumbersome, that they have to come up and move that person out of the way. And I think from a technology standpoint, that there shouldn't be any problem with us establishing a second location for that... for a second individual to come up and communicate with the committees. And I'd like for there to be some discussion on that. I just think that it makes sense. It is, um... I mean, I just... businesses have had people have scooted over. Sometimes they have different positions, and they're having to crowd each other out, and it's just, you know, it... To me, it's not as welcoming as it should be, and so I think we should take a pretty serious look at that, and I hope that happens. That's it. Thank you.
Guthrie, Ms. Hall?
Yes, I agree with Mr. Guthrie. I think that it... we should be more welcoming to come up and talk to anybody in council. I don't know how we can figure that out, but I'd like to work on it with you. And I also would like to thank Mr. Moran for coming over. It's always great to hear from citizens and hear your opinions. And I agree with Mrs. Floyd on everything. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Mr. Johnson?
I just want to thank the mayor for the proclamation on child abuse and calling attention to the really tragic things that happened with that, and I hope people will take it at heart. I know from working at the courts that it goes all the way from child abuse to adult abuse.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Marmee?
Thank you, Mr. President. I will pass.
Thank you, Mr. Marmee.
There's a basketball game on today. I really don't care who wins, because I don't like either team. I mean, I'll just wrap up, and there is an important basketball game on.
Okay. That's right.
Well, I'll take the next ten minutes. It's Mr. Marmee.
You have about two minutes left.
I just want to say, I was at the Renewark Streetscape meeting last week as well. I think I've been to each one of them. And I'm... I've been excited about the changes that are coming in downtown Newark and continue to be so. It was great to see so many people there. I actually brought a couple of business owners with me that hadn't been to one before. They had some... after seeing the plans, had some general concerns. Hopefully, those will be addressed, but they were excited about all the changes that were coming as well. And it is neat to see the growth that's happening, and we already have businesses moving ahead and residents, second-floor, third-floor residents being built, and I think that's great. I'm excited about that. I'm sorry that Renee left, but I want to thank her for her dedication to a... excuse me, to an issue that's very near and dear to me, and I appreciate all the things that she does for child abuse. That'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Ratt. Mr. Ralletta?
Thank you, Mr. President. I as well would like to thank the mayor and Ms. Steele for bringing attention to the issue of child abuse. And I also agree with Mr. Guthrie, and I think it would help the flow of meetings if we had a second podium for questions during committee meetings. I'd also like to thank Chief Sarver for speaking with the Safety Committee last Monday. I know some people may not think we should be discussing issues such as an annual report during a committee meeting. I personally disagree. I believe I'll continue to invite speakers to give presentations on issues that relate to safety in our city. I think it'll provide some good opportunities to have open dialogue in a public setting, and I think that's a positive thing. So, thank you, and that'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Ralletta. Mr. Blake?
You know, I want to echo the comments. I also attended the Renewark event last Thursday, and Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Rhodes, and Fred Ernst, the whole... I mean, it was just a good evening. I think the diversity that was in the room, from business leaders to residents, to, you know, it was a good spread of folks to provide input, and the presentation was very well done. I know some people are... you're hearing murmurs about roundabouts throughout the city, but I guess we'll just have to... as time goes on, I think people will probably warm up more to that. But I think it was a really good diagram, good plan. I do want to say, Mr. Palmer and I have been emailing back and forth, and so we'll get coffee soon, sir. And I do thank you for coming to present tonight. And then I want to thank Director Rhodes and then for providing us some trash bags. Last Saturday, we had about seventy, seventy, eighty people, from guest club volunteers, from residents of the community, some small business owners in the community. We had a cleanup, and we filled a huge commercial dumpster from Big O with trash, and we also collected over sixty tires throughout the neighborhood. So it was a really good morning to clean up and to put some community service set for us, and so I thought that was a really good morning. I do want to remind folks, you may have gotten an invitation this Friday, April eleventh, is the Fifth Annual Committee Interrelational Relations Conference. Orley Taylor at OSU Newark puts this on, and it's Friday morning, April eleventh, and if you haven't got your RSVP in, you know, feel free to contact Orley at OSU Newark. But it's a good morning to talk about bringing diversity and inclusion and respecting all the different aspects that we have here in our city, so I think it's a good dialogue. And with that, I'll pass. Oh, I'm sorry. Call the Finance Committee meeting for next week. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. Mr. Ratt?
Thank you. I need to call the Ways and Means Committee meeting for next Monday. That'll pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ratt. And Mr. Cox?
I'm rather proud to announce that, in my opinion, the citizens of Newark have free and unencumbered access to council meetings and to committee meetings. I'm also pleased to see that these meetings actually can be held in an orderly fashion, with some courtesy and some respect for not only the people that are seated here, but for the people that are seated out there. That's all we're asking, is to do this in an orderly fashion, all technology issues aside. I understand those. I just think we need to make sure that these are just held with some basic courtesy and some basic rules that you learn. I believe they start in kindergarten. With that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. I will take a look to see if there's some way we can make that a little better during committees, if you give me a little time, we'll take a look and see if we can come up with something.
There is too much.
Yeah, maybe we can come up with some way we can get that to work, so we'll work on that a little bit. Next committee meeting will be April fourteenth at five-thirty here in this building. Our next council meeting will be April twenty-first here at seven PM. So motion adjourned?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Ratt? Second by Mr. Cox? I'll favor the seat of half a second. We're adjourned.